Call to order the meeting of Monday, November the 25th and asks the clerk to please read the roll.
Councilmember Archibald.
Here.
Councilmember Ashford.
Present.
Councilmember Harris.
Here.
Councilmember Lewandowski.
Here.
Councilmember Moller.
Here.
Councilmember Ruiz.
Here.
Mayor Rett.
Here. You have before you the minutes from the regular meeting of November the 11th. Do I have a motion to receive and file?
So move.
Councilmember Ashford, is there a second? Support? Mayor Protam Archibald, is there any additions or deletions? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The minutes stand as submitted. We have a couple of presentations tonight, and if the clerk would please read the first one.
Patty Samard, Chair of the McMoran Civic Center Authority, will present their strategic plan for the facility.
Hello.
Good evening.
Before we get started with the PowerPoint presentation, I just wanted to explain that I wanted to thank everybody who's been involved in this whole entire process with us over the last almost two years now, year and a half to two years. I want to thank the city council, first of all, for appointing all of us. I want to thank all the McMoran board members, many of whom are here tonight, who have worked really, really hard on this and put in a lot of hours and time, as I have told you before, on a weekly basis. And I want to thank the staff at McMoran who have done an awful lot of work with us and who are just there every day, making sure that the building is just up and running and operating so all of us can continue to use it while the rest of us kind of dream about how we might envision it in the future. All right, I'm just going to go with this here. When we were appointed as a board, just over about 20 months ago, the council asked us to do a few things as a board. They asked us to review the purpose of McMoran, they asked us to review the current uses, the operations and budget that goes with that, and the community's support and the needs of the community, and how does McMoran fit into all of that at this time. It's a 50-year-old plus building, so the council asked us to please review the entire facility and see if it was continuing to meet our community needs. Just so you know, I think most people know that McMoran is a, was a gift, was given to the city by the, some very generous families from the community. And when we went through this whole entire process, one of the things that we learned was that many communities that would like to have a facility like McMoran do not have one, and therefore, when they look at putting something, they want to build one, that's a whole separate budget and a whole separate expense is actually building and constructing the facility. We already have it in place, so that is an expense that we do not, as a community, need to incur at this time. And obviously, the facility was conceived as a civic center, and just like we, many of us on the board kind of view it as, like, even though it's not a department of the city, it's a recreational facility, and so like, you know, it serves recreational purposes. We looked at the current operations as a board, we realized, recognized the fact that over the last few years, the events calendar has expanded. We've gotten a lot of feedback that there are, there's a lot of support in the community for community-oriented events, meaning dance recitals, high school graduations, et cetera, take place there. We have done some, actually done, during the course of our tenure as a board, we've helped by providing some facility improvements or allowing the staff to do that. It's a little, we have a wish list, of course, and we have to peck away at that slowly but surely. We really view McMoran as an asset for the entire community and as a whole, probably within primarily the jurisdictions of our county, those are the people who are the primary users of McMoran. In fact, we know that the primary users of McMoran do not, 80% of whom do not even live in the, in the city. We do know, too, that the, over the last few years, the operations of the facility have improved, we have reduced the operating expenses. That's a plus in terms of, people like to see us spending less money. Sometimes that can be a negative because it means the staff is very extremely lean and their time is taxed, and it's, and it is a very busy place. The operations of the facility have been very successful, the financial performance is, has been very, very good. Something that we're extremely proud of, and we know through the research that we did over the last 20 months, is that McMoran, the revenues that, it's basically a leased facility, really, it's the primary purpose of, I mean, that's how we bring in income. And we cover about 90% of our expenses, and on a nationwide basis, we compared ourselves to other facilities that are similar in size and in communities of similar size, and we found that we are really in the top, I don't know, I don't want to put a number on what percentage because we didn't do that sort of a study, but we did look at a number of facilities, and we stand out, and I think that the staff and the board should be very proud of that, and the city and the council should be very proud of that, because we recover about 90% of our operating costs through the building being leased out and the revenues that we're able to bring in as a result of all of that. Now, if you look at those pie charts, that we did a comparison to the Port Huron Recreation Department, and the parks, and the county parks, and John Ogden helped us with these numbers, and he pulled and determined that the revenues from those different departments and, of course, the county parks and Rec Department, that the blue that you see in the pie chart is the revenue that those, that they generate, and then the rest of their budget, of course, comes from allocations from the county and then the city. We do have some increasing challenges. The facility is, like I said, a lean meeting machine, and it's 50-plus years old, and the conditions require some modernization. The thing that really struck me that I learned a little bit about from the company that we worked with to help us with this final report, was that the fan, what he refers to, one of our, the men who helped us, was that talked about was the fan experience. 50 miles from us, we have Comerica Park, we have Ford Field, they're going to build a new facility for the Red Wings, and those facilities that our residents visit regularly create a fun fan experience, and people who attend those facilities kind of build an expectation of what they would like to see when they go to a hockey game or to an entertainment event of some sort. So we have a need, and if we're going to compete, because people here who spend their dollars and can drive 50 miles to Detroit, or 50 miles in, you know, any direction, our facility needs to be up to those standards. Also, there's a declining perception among promoters, and that's not, the biggest piece of that, that piece of the puzzle, is that the promoters, so the staff is extremely helpful and will bend over backwards and accommodate their needs, but years ago, let's say, for example, if you brought the ice capades or an ice show in, they would come with one semi-truck and their semi would have all of the stuff that they need in it, and they could be in and out of the building unloading that truck pretty easily. Now they bring three or four, or more maybe, semi-trucks full of equipment for a show like that, and we don't have a proper loading dock facility. And so some of what we're going to talk about here today is about, is really about the back-end things that people don't necessarily see, but they're important if we're going to bring new entertainment into the facility. The objections, plan objectives that we set were, we wanted to identify a new market position for McMoran, we wanted to look at potential reuse of spaces, we wanted to identify capital improvement programs, how are we going to fund this, and we wanted to look at realistic and sustainable operating strategies. So what we did, when we first set out, was we conducted four public meetings, and we got overwhelming support for saving and funding the facility. In fact, we asked the question of those who attended, do you want to see McMoran close or do you want to see it continue? And 100% of those who participated in all four meetings gave an overwhelming 100% response, they wanted to see it continue. There was significant interest in repurposing portions of the facility. A number of parents came to us and came up to us after the meetings were over and shared with us the fact that they had kids involved in a lot of other sports other than soccer, or other than hockey, such as soccer and baseball and lacrosse and rugby and whatnot, and there's no indoor facility for them to use in this community, and they're driving their children 40 or 50 miles to make use of facilities in other communities. We also, there was a strong emphasis from those focus groups on the fact that they wanted the facility to really still focus on community-based programming, meaning they wanted still be able to have their kids' dance recitals in the theater and some other things like that, that we didn't want to, they didn't want, they want to make sure that we didn't price ourselves out of that market so the building sat dark instead of being able to hold a, a dance recital. And that's one of the, because we're a municipally-owned and operated facility, we don't have to quote-unquote "make" money, but we can break even and still provide a community service. We also felt that was important to, or they expressed, most of the people who came, by the way, to those public sessions, I want to make note of this, they were not even residents of the city of Port Huron, I think it was 50, 50 or 60, 40 that were not residents, and they wanted, they were asking us, why haven't you asked people from the surrounding communities to help to fund McMoran or to do something to help McMoran, because we see it as a community asset. Just because we don't live in the city limits doesn't mean that we don't value McMoran. So what we did as a board, after listening to all that feedback, was we hired Brailsford and Dunleavy, also known as BND, which is a consulting firm, they do a lot of educational work, a lot of municipal work, they specialize in writing business plans and strategic plans, and then actually specialize, another branch of their company specializes in actually helping communities build a facility like McMoran. But what we wanted for them, from them, was to help, help putting together a strategic plan and business plan and prepare the potential budget, and then investigate potential funding So we looked at what, one of the things that we really focused on was the pavilion reuse. I can tell you that through the research that Brailsford and Dunleavy did, and that I even looked up on my own, is that the minor youth hockey in the whole United States has declined, the participation has declined by about 60%. So we have two sheets of ice or ice rinks, buildings that were built to be ice rinks, and we have one of them, the junior arena, of course, has, doesn't have the stadium seating that's, you know, permanently struck apart or the structure, so we have this big empty room, and what else could we potentially do with it? Since a lot of the people who had attended the community meetings had expressed interest in other sports, we started looking at what other sports could be put inside of a great big box building. And we looked at rugby and soccer, lacrosse, those are very fast-growing and increasing sports, kind of a fieldhouse concept. And really, what it came down to when we looked at the numbers and whatnot later on in the process was that no one sport will support that facility, that piece of the building, just dedicating it to one sport, you wouldn't, you know, just lacrosse or just soccer or just hockey right now. But if you made that building into something that could be used for a variety of sports, volleyball, basketball, all of them combined, then we would have something that could actually be more useful to the community, would fill a need that wasn't, isn't already there, and could also come closer to, you know, that whole break-even point that we like to come to. So these, this is our laundry list of the things that we specifically started looking at improving when we started talking about, well, how much is this going to cost and what are we really getting down to? We want to renovate the lobby of the theater, we want to change the arena sound and lighting in the main arena, concession renovations throughout, there is no catering, formal catering kitchen in McMoran right now, we have to hire a caterer, for example, when we have weddings and whatnot in the building. Meeting room renovation, meaning the lounge and the memorial room. The plaza out front, which we really are anxious to do something with, we have some, had some plans, very, very preliminary plans drawn up this summer and talked about what we might be able to do with that, to make McMoran with this fountain and the statues be more of a jewel in our community and kind of spruce it up a little bit, and also make it more practical for use, for a variety of uses. We looked at the facade, everybody knows that green facade has probably seen better days, and so we've already started looking at ways in which we might restore that right now. We also looked at the addition of a loading dock, as I talked, mentioned earlier, some of the shows that come in need additional or better space, or else they just will pass us by because it takes them too long to get in and out of our building. Of course, we looked at the wayfinding, branding, signage, how to get here, because we're in the city center of downtown, we're not right off an expressway. And the other couple of things regarding the pavilion, as you know, I'm sure, the pavilion and the main arena are not connected, and we found through our research that there are a number of events and activities, specifically with kids, that they won't come and use McMoran because the kids would have to go outside, especially in inclement weather, that's not seen as something, there are too many other facilities where they don't have to do that, but if we built a connector between the two buildings, that that would open up a whole other set of possibility uses for the building. So the capital, this is just some other diagram, as you can see, there's a baseball field in one of the pictures, that was something that we could do, we could also make, that's the picture of the facade, as you, as I think many of you know, if you've driven by or been in the building recently, like I said, it's had, seen better days. The plaza I talked about, and that picture on the top, right-hand side, is actually the back or the north side of the building, and many people think it was the back of McMoran. And that is where we would like to build some storage area and trying to, well, there is no storage at McMoran right now, by the way, we actually pay rent for a storage facility and had McMoran as for many, many years, and it's off-site, it's very inconvenient, and I think if you added up all the years that it has, we've paid rent on that, we probably could have built a nice little storage area many times over. But what is this going to cost? We have, basically, the bottom line is, as we shared with you a few weeks ago, a budget of $13.7 million, that includes all the lists we just went over a moment ago, and that, they factored in inflation, and those are $2,015, as you can see, and the hard cost and soft cost of construction. Without improvements, when you look at those numbers, again, when I talk, we talk about, we're doing very well financially, operationally, we're doing actually extremely well, but at some point, there will come, there's a tipping point, as some people like to call it, where the building will start to decline, we won't be able to Band-Aid it quite as much as we have been able to in recent years, and use of it will, and leasing of it and whatnot, will start to decline because it's not really, it won't be seen as an appropriate venue for some of the activities that people might want to put on the community. And there'll be other buildings and facilities in the community that maybe are more up-to-date and people will, would choose to use them instead of McMoran. So what we see is that our, without improvements, over the period, a period of time, our losses will become greater than they are now. Right now, we operate at a loss of under $200,000 a year. When you, when we were forecasting this up, it could be up to almost $700,000 a year in the not-too-distant future. If we make $13.7 million worth of improvements, we would see increased use and different kinds of use, and so we could get to an operating loss of $42,000 a year. Other things to consider during the whole process that we put this together, the, while we actually had already engaged BND, the county approached us with the whole idea of having a professional management company come to McMoran, and so we are currently working on a contract with SMG for them to manage the company, the facility. And with this also, the budget that you just looked at does assume continued support in the, from the city, right now, you, this calendar year, or fiscal year, for example, you've given us approximately $250,000, and that budget makes that assumption as well, that there would be that, that level of support. The transit center facility that's about to be constructed in the south parking lot would, right now, we're not sure how many parking spaces we may lose as a result of that, and McMoran does, through the gift really of the city, will allow us to recover the, or to keep the parking income, so that would impact our budget, and we're not sure how much right now until that's structured and parking, new parking lot is completed. But the positive to the transit center is that, you know, there's, you're going to improve McMoran Boulevard, which will, you know, create a much more enhanced appearance along the south side of the building, which people, like I said, kind of see as the front door to McMoran. And also, it would allow us to coordinate some utility work. The reason why the two buildings have never been connected before is because there's some utilities underneath there, underneath, and I don't, I'm sure that Mr. Clegg probably has details on where, what exactly is there, and I know that Mark has talked to him and Rob and Churchill, the general manager, and we're trying to figure out what exactly is there. But once the street is torn up at that time, we figured it would be an opportune time to go ahead and do that utility work if we're ever going to connect the two buildings. We weren't really, part of our charge wasn't really to find the actual funding at this point in ti, up to this point in time, but we did obviously talk about what some of the funding options would be, and we, and what kind of strategies, we talked about applying for different grants that could be used either outright or as seed for matching funds, we could, we talked about match funding with others in the municipalities within the geographic area that benefit from McMoran, and we also talked a lot about engaging with community partners who could support all or a portion of the capital improvement program. So our summary is, we have operated successfully, and we feel that as the facility conditions kind of start to decline and the market changes and the people's expectations continue to increase, that that threatens the ongoing success of the building. The capital improvements obviously are required to protect the current success and drive new revenues, and without the improvements, the facility will operate at an increased annual loss, as I just described. And so a commitment from the city and broadened regional support outside of the city and any potential partners that we can interest and attract would help with the sustained, continued sustainability of McMoran. So our next steps, we're hoping that the city council tonight would give us their blessing, your blessing, if you want to call it that, for and endorse the whole idea of the plan that we have presented to you, and move forward with a detail, we would like to move forward as a board with a detailed investigation of those funding options that we've kind of explored, but until we had the complete plan in place, it wasn't worth applying for a grant, for example, until you could tell somebody what it was that we were, you know, going to do. So now we know what we want to do, and we're hoping that the city council will allow us to continue, continue investigating where we might find those funds to do this.
Done?
I think that's it. If you have any questions?
Does anyone on council have questions? Yes, Councilmember Ashford.
Yeah, Ray. Yes. Patty, can I call you Patty?
Yeah, Patty, please.
Okay, Patty, okay, is this just going to be done as a whole, or is this a phased kind of a job that you're, that you're proposing?
Well, I think some of that depends upon the funding that we, where the funding comes from. I mean, there are pieces that we are already even attempting to work on right now, for example, the facade, the green facade, Kathy Duffy on our board has been working hard on trying to, there's some historical value to that, and she's been working on trying to identify what can we do if we want to maintain the, you know, the historical integrity with the architecture and whatnot. And so some of those things we're working on already, so it's not, and anything that we can do, that we can do within our current budget, we would move forward with, but really, the bigger pieces, you know, it's all going to depend on where the money comes from.
Right. I just asked because you listed like one, two, three, four, five, and I didn't see any priority as part of your presentation.
I think that that will come as funding sources are found. For example, in terms of grants or whatnot, you know, the theater is seen as a cultural hub, of course, and so there are grant dollars available for cultural bricks and mortar and programming and whatnot that we might be able to apply for, and that might be completely separate from dollars that might be available for recreational purposes in the junior arena.
So I think the main message that you want us to, to get up here is that it's really not an option, so we have to find some common place to update the McMoran if we want to be successful going forward in the future.
Right, absolutely.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else on council who has any questions, comments?
Just to comment, this is the appropriate time to go on it. The only thing that I found missing in the presentation was the fact that Silver Stick is not going to go away.
Oh, no.
The capabilities are, are still there in the junior arena, the pavilion, that we can put it in, we can have it in through the month of January, it's not going to hurt Silver Stick. And just, just past in October here, Mr. Shoudy was able to bring in some of the top teams in the United States here and prove that you can run a tournament in one arena in the city of Fort Yarn. And I just think that it's important and all that, we're not chasing hockey out of town, and it's going to be part of the scenario.
That's a good point, Ken, and I probably, I was trying to go through the presentation quickly. One of the, when we talk about having baseball or basketball, obviously, those two sports alone are two different surfaces. The surfaces we're talking about using and purchasing are actually removable, and that's why we need a storage area to store them, those floors, and therefore, the ice-making abilities will still remain in the junior arena. So you could theoretically have ice in there for a period of time in January, for example, during Silver Stick's, take the ice out and then have your turf surface or your court surface. I do know, at my alma mater, at Northern Michigan University, they play hockey and basketball on the same day in their, the same building, on the same surface, because they can change that floor out, that, they can take the basketball floor out, break, within a matter of a couple hours, and have the ice ready to go for the hockey team that night.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who has any comments or questions?
Mayor Rett.
Yes, Councilmember Moller.
I'd just like to compliment the board for the fine job they did, as I did in the prior meeting. I think you're on the right track, and, and I think it's important that the people, the citizens of Port Huron understand that the expense of this is what you're trying to spread out throughout the communities and get the other communities involved. As you know, it's something that's been supported by the city of Port Huron residents for years and years, and yet overwhelmingly used by non-residents. So I think you're on the right track, hopefully you can get the other communities that surround the city to buy in and be cooperative, and I wish you good luck.
Thank you so much, Councilman Moller.
Is there anyone else? I'd just like to say thank you to you and to the entire board, you've certainly put a lot of hard work into this, so thank you very much.
All right. Oh, and before I go, I do want to do this very officially, we don't just have a PowerPoint, we have an entire report, this is all the research, BND did an awful lot of market research for us, specifically, and looked at all those different sports and whatnot, and so anyway, every last detail of 300 pages is right here. I'd like to present that to you.
Glad you've given that to Pauline.
Thank you, I'll read it tonight.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
It'll be available in the manager's office, if anybody on council wishes to take a look at the entire document, they can stop by and borrow it. We'll move on now to presentation number two.
City Manager Bruce Brown will present the housing summit recommendations.
Thank you. Seven months ago, the city council asked that we take a look at the housing situation in Port Huron and explore some possible solutions to some of the issues that we were dealing with. We have prepared a report and have finished our recommendations. This is the report, it is composed of five different sections. The first section deals with all of the people and the organizations that we worked with throughout the seven-month period. It's a, about five pages full of names of people that contributed one way or another to our efforts. The second section deals with ideas and suggestions that we got from throughout the community, and every one of those we wrote down and have included in the report. Some of those we carried forward in the, into our recommendations, others are things that we will be looking at as we go forward. The third section is what we call supporting information. A lot of it is activities that have happened in the last seven months, that have happened in our neighborhoods, and that we think are elementary to the kind of recommendations that we want to make. The fourth section, as you may know, on June 25th, we had a town hall meeting over at SC4 in their auditorium, many of you were there, and we had a lot of interesting thoughts and suggestions that came out of that, and that was directed by SEMCOG out of Detroit, and we have a copy of their report to us in this report. And then the fifth section, which is the most important section, are the recommendations that we are making to the city council tonight. We started seven months ago, I asked my staff to work with me on a number of different initiatives. One was I wanted to create a method for reducing the percentage of rentals in our community over time to about 35%. It's taken us 25 to 30 years to get where we are, and it's going to take some time to reduce that number. Secondly, I asked them for recommendations on how to create safe and attractive neighborhoods in our community. Third, I asked for a process that would streamline the blight enforcement efforts in our community and ensure shorter timeframes for ensuring corrections to violations, and Todd Shoudy will talk a little bit about what that process has entailed. We also want to expand and enhance public safety services in our neighborhoods as it relates to blight enforcement and to crime. We want to really focus on those two areas, and we're going to be asking you to help us. And lastly, I asked them to create a culture that enhances the rental section of our community. We have about 1,300 landlords in our community, it is a significant part of our economic base, and to the extent that we can help that grow and be successful, we want to do that. I want to thank four people who basically carried the water. And lastly, I asked them to create a culture that enhances the rental section of our community. We have about 1,300 landlords in our community. It is a significant part of our economic base, and to the extent that we can help that grow and be successful, we want to do that. I want to thank four people who basically carried the water on this effort. Todd Shoudy, who you will hear from in a minute, he is our corporate counsel. Mike Reeves, chief of police, fire chief, public service director, and all around a good guy. Kim Harmer, who heads our planning and department, and then Marcy Kuhn, who has taken on leadership as far as code enforcement is concerned. Our recommendations are the following. First of all, we talked some time ago about creating a new code enforcement unit within city hall by combining staff from the police department and planning department. That has been formed. It is currently in operation, and I would like to introduce Sergeant Marcy Kuhn. At this time, Marcy is the director of the new code enforcement unit, and I've asked her to take a couple of minutes and let you meet her staff and her team and talk about what they're doing.
Hi, Mayor, councilpersons. I have worked for the city for 24 years, and in each different job function that I've had throughout the police department, I've given it my all, so we no different in this new task, and I'm really looking forward to it. We've established a great crew. We have, let me step to the side here. Trudy Lewis is our code enforcement secretary. She's worked for the city 10 years. She was the planning secretary and deputy clerk for the city, so she holds a vast amount of just not only knowledge of city business, but also our computer genius out of the group, so we're lucky to have her. Cindy McPherson on the end has been our full-time blight inspector for the city for the last five years. She's been shouldering the weight of it by herself, some 2,000 complaints a year herself, so we're ready to give her some well-deserved help. She has worked for the city 20 years and was formerly a police records clerk and the community development coordinator at one time, so those are some good roles that have helped us. As far as the part-time inspectors that we have, we've hired a new crew of four. We have three with us tonight. One is Pat Cogley, and he couldn't be here, but he is the former chief probation officer of 72nd District Court, and he was on the city council for 10 years and retired from Catholic Social Services as a director. He had prior, out of town, he's actually out of state right now where he would be here, but a deep dedication to serving the city, and he is really looking forward to helping us out. Along with George Sheridan, he is retired from Detroit Police Department, and he looks familiar, he's been the court security officer for not only St. Clair County, but McComb County Courts as well. And Chris Peterson, he is retired from Marysville City as the fire inspector and assistant fire chief, also has been a supervisor for the Marine Division for St. Clair County, so he holds a vast amount of experience in doing this type of work already. As well as Chuck May, he is retired from Customs, Border Protection Department of Homeland Security, Immigrations, I have a bunch of titles there. He was a supervisor not only in Detroit, but in Fort Yarn as well, and a U.S. Navy veteran. So obviously, a great crew of people here with a wide range of knowledge, not only have careers that they've shined, but have dedicated themselves to serving the public, have enforcement backgrounds that will help us. Obviously, our goal is compliance, and these, all these people are nice people, you know, good people, so we look forward to, eager to get at this and hope the city shines.
Thank you, Marcy. I'm very excited about this unit. As you can see, we've put together a terrific team of people, and our instructions to them are not to be punitive, but to try to help working with people and with landlords to resolve the housing issues that we're facing. We are also going to continue the aggressive demolition of unsafe and dilapidated homes in our community. That started four years ago, and I think that's been very effective. We want to create and are creating new integrated databases to improve our ability to identify and deal with housing problems. We discovered seven months ago that many of the departments in city hall that had information that was important on each one of these addresses were not talking to each other. So now we have a single unified set of data as it relates to each of these properties. The inspectors, as they go in the field, will have an iPad, and will be able to draw up information on that address as they approach the address and work with the owner. We are also cross-training city employees to identify blights as they are traveling the city and routine maintenance issues. Many people think I live on Thomas Edison Drive because somebody turned our street sign. I actually live on St. Clair, and there's a lot of that around the community that we just need to have reported, and we're asking our employees to do that. We're going to be creating a system of neighborhood improvement organizations, roughly coterminous with the neighborhood policing zones, which you see on one of these maps. They will be, our feet on the ground, they will be the group that we communicate with. There are a number of them in place in the community already. Kathy Solomon down here heads one of them, but there's a significant part of the community that is not under one of these organizations, and we want to create those. We want to implement some design changes in selected neighborhoods that will lessen the conflict between pedestrian and vehicular traffic and improve the quality of life at the neighborhood level. We are going to, after the first of the year, have a planning design session led by architects, engineers, landscape architects, and citizens that will go through a series of design recommendations for how to humanize our neighborhoods and make them more attractive. We want to recommend to the city council a ballot initiative for the passage of a dedicated millage to be used for expansion of public safety services at the neighborhood level as it relates to blight and crime. We are also recommending six ordinance changes that are significant and probably the guts of our recommendation to city council, and I've asked Todd Shoudy if he will review those with you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Do I have a PowerPoint? There are six proposed ordinance changes. Three of those are designed to address the request that we streamline the blight enforcement process, and those three are on the agenda for a first reading tonight. And the second group of ordinance changes are rules designed, thank you, to address the rental unit issue, and two of those include changes to the zoning ordinances, and because they include zoning ordinance changes under our existing ordinances, that would be referred to the planning commission for their review and recommendations. So let me start with the streamlining the blight enforcement process. Under the current system, as was referenced by Sergeant Kuhn, there were over 2,000 blight complaints in 2012. We had a single inspector in 2012 who investigated all 2,000-plus complaints. Under the system we have in place right now, the inspector would go out, and if there was a blight violation, would then send a letter to the property owner, asking that, you know, telling them that they have a violation and asking them to correct that. They may wait, the inspector may wait 30 to 60 days to give them an opportunity to correct it, and may go and do a second inspection. And if the blight remains and hadn't been corrected, a second letter may be sent out. There might be a third letter, there might be a fourth letter, there may be a number of phone calls placed to the property owner in the hopes of getting the situation corrected. Obviously, your blight inspector went to great lengths to try to achieve voluntary compliance. If all of those efforts were exhausted, and our blight inspector couldn't get the property owner to fix the issue, then one of the tools available would be the issuance of a municipal civil infraction, which came with a fine. The hope would be that the fine would get the attention of the property owner, and then the property owner would go ahead and fix the blight at that point to avoid additional fines. We found that quite often the fines weren't paid. They were turned into the collection agency to try to collect, just like any other debt. In total, 85% or more of the fines that are issued are ignored and not paid. So the fine structure has been relatively ineffective. Ultimately, if all of these efforts fail and the situation is problematic enough, the city would then come to our office and ask us to initiate a court complaint, to try to get a court order to order that the blight be corrected. In 2012, there were 24 such cases. By the time the case got to our office and before a judge, in most cases, one year had passed, approximately one year. And in the meantime, that whole year, the blight situation still exists. You're still getting calls from neighbors complaining about the blight problem, and it's not being fixed. So what do we want to do? The primary goal to our changes is to gain compliance. We want to make sure the blight situation gets fixed. And we want a system that effectively addresses the blight issue and creates a balanced system. Under the current system, we do, we take a lot of effort to try to work with the resident. We want to make sure we still have the efforts to give the resident an opportunity to finish or fix the problem themselves and avoid fines. And we want also to give the city the flexibility to give somebody more time, like we currently do. If somebody really needs more time to fix a blight situation, we want to give them more time. If somebody can't fix the problem on their own, for whatever reason, and they need to draw upon community resources or city resources or grant programs or all of the things that Kim Harmer's group has offered over the years, we also want to give more time for that. But at the same time, we want to make sure we have an effective way for dealing with people who ignore and aren't willing to make the changes. So we created a new system in the ordinances. The first ordinance you have is the creation of an administrative hearings bureau. The sole purpose of this bureau would be to rule upon blight violations. We would have an impartial retired judge or an attorney with five years' experience, that's something the statute requires, and the administrative hearings bureau would have jurisdiction up to 10,000 in fines and could issue orders to fix blight. This is a process that is statutorily created. It's something that cities can create, and several cities have. Our plan would be initially that we would schedule one hearing day per month, and obviously, depending on the volume, it may go down to a half-day a month, and maybe there may be times where you have to have a second day a month. One of the advantages to the system is we have the ability to schedule the hearing dates, and I'll talk about that more in a second. The second thing the ordinance creates is a fix-it-ticket concept. When we attended the meeting in June, one of our residents offered what I thought was a creative suggestion, and that resident I should probably give some credit to, I believe he's here, Mr. Francic. We had to track him down by the transcript we prepared and find out who offered the suggestion, but it was a good one. And the concept that Mr. Francic proposed, if I don't butcher his idea too badly, was why put the city in a situation where it has to go to all of these efforts? Calling people, sending them letters, following up visits, why not put some of the onus on the property owner? So the proposal was a fix-it-ticket, and so what's a fix-it-ticket? Under our ordinance, it would be a blight violation notice. So you take the situation where we have a blight complaint, our blight inspector goes out first time, sees the blight, they would issue at that point in time, they'd have their little device, iPad or computer device, and then they could type in the information, go back, and issue a blight violation notice first time, and this notice would be a fix-it ticket. It would specify a date in the notice by which somebody has a specific date to fix the blight, and if they do, the ticket would be dismissed. The same time, it also would give them a hearing date if they want to challenge this, and they don't want to fix the blight, they would have a hearing date. And then it would also disclose what the fine is if our administrative hearings bureaus fines them in violation, and that fine would be something that would be set by city council in the future. And so what we would have is a system where you have an administrative hearings bureau and a fix-it-ticket process, and the two would work together. The fix-it-ticket and us having the ability to set the administrative hearings bureau's dates would give the inspector flexibility. So if you give the ticket and the property owner calls up and says, "You've given me two weeks to fix this," or "30 days to fix this, I need more time, I can't get out and get this done in that time, I need to wait till my next paycheck, I need to wait for some other resources," whatever the case may be, the inspector then would have the ability to move that fix-it date back and reschedule the court hearing. If you have a situation where, you know, the classic example is you have an elderly resident who, for whatever reason, can't physically go out and do it, or someone who doesn't have the financial resources to fix the blight, let's say it's a porch issue or a roof issue, then we would have the ability to adjourn the fix-it date and adjourn the court hearing so that we could try to tap some community resources. The hope would be that, you know, there may be, you know, a church group or other community resources who might be willing to come forward, and you want to give the process time to organize that type of help. But on the same token, the reverse is true. If we have a situation where a property owner ignores the ticket, just ignores it, does nothing, doesn't fix it, then they could expect their case to proceed to a hearing before the administrative hearings bureau and a decision rendered, ordering them to pay a fine and still fix the problem in 30 to 60 days after that first inspection. So you would have something that would have some teeth to it and would result in a fairly quick court decision. Now, the one thing that our ordinance provides, and this is something that's provided for in the statute, and there's actually additional legislation pending right now to add even more teeth to this, is that an administrative hearings bureau order to pay a fine has the same effect as a court decision, so that if somebody doesn't pay it, we don't turn them into the collection bureau to collect it, we can institute any other collection methods we have, such the usual ones like garnishment, attachment, execution, garnish wages, garnish bank accounts. You have the ability to actually force them to pay it, as opposed to the current system where we're only collecting 15% of the money. Now, a few other things that are in the proposed ordinance, a property owner doesn't appear at the hearing, and the ticket is sworn by our inspectors, they can be defaulted, they have the right to appeal our decisions directly to circuit court. We still retain the ability to waive a fine if you have an owner-occupied home and you have a first-time offender, and they decide to challenge the system for whatever, let's say they go to blight court and they lose, but then they, after they get the order, they go out and fix it, for a first-time offender, we have the right to waive that fine, and that's something that's specifically provided in the statute. It's not meant to double-dip on rental inspections. You have your normal rental certification process, someone goes out and inspects a rental unit, we can't give them a fix-it ticket on that time, but if we give them a list of things they need to correct to get their rental certification, and they don't, then you can go the fix-it-ticket route. And that's something, both of those provisions are something specifically provided by statute. This system is not designed to change the existing demolition process that we have, where we have a dangerous building hearing, the one we currently use for dilapidated homes. That process would not be changed by this at all. There would be two additional changes to our ordinances. I believe those are 12 and 13 on your, on the agenda for tonight. There's the blight ordinance, there's been a rewrite of the blight ordinance. Under the statute, to make violations fall within the jurisdiction of your administrative hearings bureau, you have to designate them as blight violations, as opposed to the existing municipal. municipal civil infraction. So we had to make some changes to the blight ordinance. That has been reworked by a team of employees, a lot of the existing blight inspector, you know, several other employees have looked at this, and we've tried to come up with a little rewrite of that to try to organize it better. And lastly, we have, under our, the city has adopted the Building Code and the International Property Maintenance Code. There are approximately four sections under that that are really designed to address blight violations, so we would designate those as blight violations so that they fall within the jurisdiction of our administrative hearings bureau. So those are the main changes, and that's a summary of the three ordinance changes that you have on the agenda for tonight, which are designed to streamline the blight enforcement. Are there any questions before I move to the rental?
Anyone on council have any questions for Mr. Shoudy? Go ahead.
The next set of three ordinances, which are not before the city council tonight, but, you know, should be in some form in the future, are new rules on rental units. And I'm starting with the premise that having rental units in our community is a positive thing. We have people who live in our city who can't afford to buy a home, or for their own purposes or their own reasons, have decided not to buy, and they need a place to live, and that would be a rental. But the premise I'm starting with is also is that having too many rental units is not a good thing for the city, and it has a harmful impact on the city and property values and the residents. So the goals that I was asked to meet were, let's place some measures in place that would restrict the conversion of owner-occupied homes in the future into rental units in residential areas. Let's create places within this city where a person can own a home and live in it, and know that their neighborhood will not be saturated with new rental units. So we want people to want to buy owner-occupied homes. We want to increase the number of people we have who make Port Iren their home. So ordinance fourteen, the first proposal is to restrict new rentals in our districts. I believe for those in the audience, we have, the city is zoned into a number of different districts. One of those districts, one of those zonings is our single-family residential. So we have a whole series of homes here at the north end, and a large neighborhood as well to the south end that are currently zoned, single-family residential. So the proposal is that we would restrict and not allow, with one exception, which I'll talk about in a second, new residential rental units in the R district. This would not change existing rental units. So existing rental units would basically become grandfathered, they would not change. If somebody owns a rental unit and sells it to another landlord who wants to rent it, that use would run with the land and continue. But if a rental unit stops being a rental unit, then it couldn't later be converted back into a rental unit, so it would lose that initial use. So this would be more of a long-term solution. It's not going to have immediate impact, but over time, the hope would be that it would protect at least some areas of the city. We've, ordinance sixteen, which is an amendment to the rental certification ordinance, also creates a hardship exception. And this would be the one exception I mentioned. We would have a hardship exception, somebody who believes that they fall within a hardship and really needs to rent their home for their own reasons that are financial or personal, they would have the ability to file a request with our rental appeals board. And there would be two hard, two primary hardships. One would be financial circumstances, someone is in dire financial straits for a variety of different reasons, and they really need to rent this just to make ends meet. And second of all, personal circumstances. We have the classic situation if somebody loses their job and has to move out of the area. Or somebody has a, let's say somebody's in the military and gets called to active duty, and they want to rent their home in the absence. So this would be the personal circumstance situation. The second rental-related change would be ordinance fifteen. And what we're doing here is we're trying to create a procedure for a neighborhood to petition city council for those who live in the R1 district. If you look at the R1 district, you're looking at this light blue area. These are areas that were zoned years ago as single and two-family residential. What we would do under this ordinance change is create a petition process that would allow a neighborhood to come together and say, "We want our neighborhood," even though it's an R1, "to be treated the same way as you have in R with the restriction on new rentals." So I set forth here on the PowerPoint to some of the basic steps that would take place. The petition would start at the city clerk's office. It would have to start with somebody who actually lives in that neighborhood. The neighborhood would be self-defined, it would have to have fifty or more lots or parcels. So, you know, it may be a four-block area with some street boundaries. You have to have at least two-thirds of the parcel or lot owner sign the petition, and then that petition would be brought to the city clerk, it would go by the planning director, and it would be referred to the planning commission, just like any other zoning change, and ultimately, it would come to city council, who would have the final say on whether or not that overlay district would exist. So this would create what they call a rental restriction overlay district, I'll call R01. So if you go through this whole process, you basically have created a district within a district, an overlay district, that is just like the R district, where there would be no new rentals. We would still have the hardship exception, existing rental units would still be grandfathered. The only difference in this R01 is because it is zoned single and two-family, is it would not stop new rentals in two-family homes. But it would prevent single-family homes in this overlay district from being converted into a two-family home. So what I have attached here to my PowerPoint are a couple examples. The city of East Lansing uses this identical procedure, I shouldn't say identical, it has a couple differences to it, but a very, very similar procedure. Currently, they have this system in place, and they have had it in place since 2004, and there are seventeen rental overlay districts that have been created by neighborhoods and citizen groups. Here's an example, you can see this is one that covers a fairly large area. All of those lots that have the shaded lines in them, those are all existing rentals that were grandfathered. And then, I believe this one was created in 2005, and you can see that this kind of runs along a rail, it looks like a railroad track, it goes down to a school property, and it is all contiguous, it's a fairly large neighborhood. Do you go to the next one, please? This one is actually the first one that was established by the city of East Lansing. You could see this is just a, you know, a good example of what an overlay district could look like. You know, it travels down one road, down another, goes up along a property line, and looks like it captures, you know, probably something that was a subdivision at one point. So those are some good examples of what it would look like. Next slide, please. The last ordinance is additional changes to the rental certification ordinance, as I mentioned, that we would create this hardship exception. Second of all, one of our concerns has been that we have a number of property owners who sell their property on a land contract. Unfortunately, sometimes those have all of the earmarks of a rental unit. For example, we've had people who have sold the same piece of property on a land contract six and seven times in a six- or seven-year period. So what our ordinance here is going to request or require is that if you want your land contract to be considered legitimate and not a rental unit, record it with the county and then give us a copy. You could see how perhaps the requirement that you record the land contract may come into play with somebody who is trying to establish that they should be grandfathered, if you establish your R, your rental restriction in an R and R01. So if you sell it on a land contract, it's not a rental, that's not your use anymore. And then the last change is that, if you recall, a number of years ago, about three years ago, the city changed the rental certification time period from a six-year cycle to a two-year cycle, and I think the experience of the city has been that two years may be too frequent for the units that are in really good shape, and it may not be frequent enough for the units that are an ongoing problem. So we've created two new categories of rental units. Hopefully, this will give landlords an incentive to keep their units in pristine shape. One would be an exemplary residential rental unit, which would be placed on a four-year cycle, and this would be a unit that has had no major violations, no code cases, no major issues for a four-year cycle. They would then be on the, a four-year inspection period. And then on the reverse would be true, if you have someone who has multiple major violations, they would be called a probationary residential rental unit, and they would be on a one-year cycle. If you're on a one-year cycle, and you go a full year with no problems, you're back on the two-year cycle. If you go four years with no problems, then you're into the four-year cycle. So hopefully, it'll be an incentive for landlords to keep that up, especially given that they have to pay an inspection fee for the rental, for the inspections. So the bottom line is, we're hoping that those will beat the task of creating places in the city where people can buy a home and know that their whole neighborhood isn't going to change to rental units. So any questions on that?
Does anyone have any questions? Councilmember Lewandowski.
First, I'd say using East Lansing when you work in a Fletcher office may get you off a day without pay there.
Should've used Ann Arbor.
My question, though, is how do you, how would an average homeowner say somebody was going to buy rental properties, and there's an overlay district in that area, how would they be able to find out about it?
All of your rental overlay districts would be created by ordinance, so there would be an ordinance that would specify that. I would hope that the city would have a map of that on the website as well. That's what the city of East Lansing does, they have all seventeen there, and I pulled those maps that you saw right off there.
I just, I ask that because I'm a little concerned, not so much for that, I like that idea, but with some shady dealings that happen as I work in, you know, that type of field where I see people sell houses that have back taxes that somebody didn't know about. I'm concerned about just some landlord selling a house, or somebody selling a house that they think they can turn into a rental, and all of a sudden, they have this house there and not be able, and they didn't know that it was R1 or R01 district in that area.
Sure, I mean, it should be clearly published on our website. It would be, it would be in our code of ordinances that would be listed, that would define the territory and hopefully have the map that goes with it.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions for Mr. Shoudy?
Hey, Rep.
Yes, Councilmember Moller.
Todd, I don't know where to start with this thing. I laughed reading Mr. Brown's report. It seems to me we're doing a lot of work just to take on Mr. Barkum and a couple other slum landlords that won't work with the city. And we're making an enemy out of landlords association where, if we worked with them, they know who the trouble people are. When I read the report, and we talked about crime, statistically, I can't believe I'm wrong in this, but statistically, if you were to look, most of the murders, drug deals and that are in public housing over the last several years. There's nothing in here about closing public housing. For every private place we're going to close, we ought to close a public match. You can get down to thirty-five rentals, thirty-five percent rentals in the city, just close the public housings tomorrow. The people down in the south end of Port Iren have complained about Delhut Village for forty years, and we have done nothing to help them. And it's still there, and probably still a major problem area, and this isn't going to address it, because we're not going to cite ourselves. As to the second part there, the current system, have we talked to the courts? The courts have been very, I find the courts in St. Clair County very easy to work with, and the judges. Have we talked to them about speeding the system up? And then when, if the answer is yes, and they haven't been cooperative, I find that hard to believe, I find it, it's more the city's fault that we haven't been fast, that this hasn't worked, because just a couple months ago, we voted to tear down a house that had been burnt out for five years. It took the city five years to decide to burn, tear down a house that was burned out for five years. Now, all of a sudden, because one of my residents doesn't paint a slab on his house, one of the people that got a blight ordinance because he had a paint spot that wasn't covered. As to the new system, how are we paying for this? I assume Mr. Brown answered that by saying we're asking the city taxpayers to pay for a millage?
I would defer to Mr. Brown on that, but, you know, what we're talking about when we talk about the administrative hearings bureau is, I believe we've advertised at sixty-five dollars an hour, and right now, we're looking at probably one day a month. So you figure approximately eight hours times sixty-five, so you're probably looking at around five hundred dollars times twelve months at this point.
Okay.
For the administrative hearings bureau.
Okay. One of the things, one of the things I didn't know, and I didn't have time to research the state law, but on any other administrative hearing, any other quasi-judicial, judicial branch of government, whether it be federal, state, or whatever, the arbitrator has to live within the jurisdiction. The judge has to live within St. Clair County. So are we talking about bringing a judge in from Ira Township to sit up here and tell us what is proper in the city of Port Iren or not? And I know residency requirements aren't required, but they are for judges. All judges must live within their district. In any city that I know that has an administrative hearing officer, that judge or arbitrator has to live within the jurisdiction of the city. I think that needs to be added to the ordinance. One of the things I found interesting was fines. Fines don't get things fixed. The fix-it ticket, it's a great idea, we've used it in law enforcement for thirty years on cars. You know, you give you, you got a headlight out, you got ten days to get a fix ticket, any police officer, you sign it, any police officer in state can sign it, and it's waived. Great idea, giving a person, when I first got into the police department, we used to give tickets to people for detective headlights, we charged them a hundred dollars if they didn't get the ticket fixed, or the headlight fixed. And so fines don't get the thing fixed. All fines do is help the tax, the government grow its bureaucracy, and I see this as just growing bureaucracy. Are the garnishments that you're talking about, are they administrative garnishments?
No, they would be a garnishment through the court system.
Okay.
Just like any other.
They're not administrative garnishments, so, or does the court have the authority to have administrative garnishments in this type of case?
No, no, it would go through the, it would go through the existing court system.
Which adds a cost to us, but needless to say, moving on. For every, I've already mentioned, for every private place, if we're going to close a private rental, then we need to close a public rental. One of the things that I find interesting is this council just voted here a year or two ago to build new, to add an additional projects up on Garfield Street. As far as I know, that hasn't started yet, and we should immediately stop that right now if we want to get down to thirty-five and rescind that order, because we don't want it to go up another five percent or ten percent. I don't know what happened to that project, I don't think it started, I don't, maybe it has, and I just didn't see it up there, but off of Garfield there, they were going to connect it to the River View project. Recording the land contracts, I have a problem with that. Can we force that upon people? How do we supersede state law?
Well, what we're doing is...
Because I bought a house, I bought a house and land contract, and I didn't register it until the day I paid it off.
It's basically voluntary. If you want it to be considered a land contract by the city, then you register it. If you don't, then we'll consider it an illegal rental, and that's what our ordinance provides. And so basically, what we're trying to do is say, if this is legitimate, and this isn't a device to get around our rental certification ordinance, take at least the minimal step of recording it to show us that you consider it legitimate, and we should... should consider it the same way.
I guess one of the others, so what we're doing with this, by passing this, which I assume will be passed, but what we are doing with this is we're driving honest people underground to make them criminals. Then, but the biggest thing about the report that I found really interesting, and I, and I know you didn't write it, Mr. Brown did, but we, we talked about these people from out of state investing in our city and landlords and buying houses and property. So what we're going to do is we're going to come down harder than them. The question that begs to be answered, in my opinion, is why aren't businesses investing in the City of Port Huron? And why aren't they bringing jobs to the City of Port Huron? That's the real question here, as far as I'm concerned. It's not landlords. We've always had crime, we're always going to have crime, and we're always, uh, but if you had jobs here, and we had investors coming here and wanting to develop here, it'd be different. I did some, I did do a little bit of research. Over seventy-nine percent of the people who rent are over thirty years of age in the United States. So it's not every eighteen, we get the idea because there's an eighteen, nineteen, twenty-year-old kid out there who's misbehaving, that every tenant is a troublemaker. Fifty-five percent or more of them make over thirty thousand dollars a year. Sixty-nine percent of them have rented for over two years. And then we talk about, I hear this story that renters are the worst thing that ever happened to Port Huron. Now I would ask you, what are the, some of the major tourist cities of the United States? Would you concur that New York is probably a big tourism city?
Could be, sure.
Sixty-six percent of the people that live in New York live in rentals. Boston, Massachusetts, a major tourist attraction. Sixty-three percent of the people live in rentals. San Francisco, a major tourist attraction. Sixty-two percent of the people live in rentals. L.A., a major tourist attraction. Sixty-one percent of the people live in rentals. Port Huron, not a major tourist attraction. To me, we're declaring war on people that have investment in this property, pay water bills, pay taxes. If the buildings they didn't buy and rent would be vacant, and we'd be voting up here to spend twenty thousand dollars to tear the buildings down. We're making war criminals out of our landlords. There are, and one of the biggest offenders is the public housing. I won't be supporting anything unless there's a lot of changes done, I can tell you that. But my one vote won't make much of a difference, I'm sure. Thank you.
Can I make one?
Yes, you can.
Yeah, just, uh, just to be clear on this ordinance proposal, fourteen and fifteen that are, that would be sent to the planning commission for their input, we are not removing any existing rental units. We're not declaring war on a landlord and taking their rental units away. What we're doing is, we're trying to stop in certain areas. There is many zones and districts within the city. You can see we have all of these other districts. Rentals are still permitted there, and the existing rental units that exist in the R would still be grandfathered, and that a landlord, if they wanted to sell their home to another landlord, could still do so. And in the R-1, wherever there is no overlay district, they still have the ability to convert owner-occupied homes into rentals. So I just want to make clear that that's, uh, you know, that there's no rental units that are being removed by this process. Again, this is a, a long-term solution, if you will, where we're trying to define places within the city where people can buy and, and hopefully have a secure investment in some, in a place where they'll want to make it their home. That's the goal of the, the proposed changes.
That was a rebuttal to my answer, or questions, or statements?
I don't think we're, we're really having a presentation right now on the actual ordinance.
Okay, then Mayor Rep, I have a follow-up question.
Pardon me?
I have a follow-up question.
Okay, is it about the presentation? Because I believe we should move on to the items when they come before us. Go ahead.
What, one of the things, when I talked about the administrative lodgers I think should live in the city, um, another thing I, I want to tell you about that irritates me, and I know I'm going to step on some toes, because, um, I know most of these people over here that were hired as inspectors, I know most of them, and I know they'll do a good job, and I love Kim Harmon, but what I hate is a resident of the City of Port, Port Huron, having somebody from Lakeport tell us about our housing problems. And I know only one, and I don't know all, where everybody lives here, but I only know of one of those six inspectors that we hired, two maybe, that live in the city. I just, I know we can't require them to live in the city, but I find it highly offensive for people to come into our community and tell us how to live. Thank you.
You're done, you're done with your presentation, I take it? Unless there's someone else that has a question, we'll let Mr. Brown continue with his presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, two weeks ago, my daughter Sarah and her family visited us here in Port Huron. Uh, they were interested in the Dyson Maritime Museum down on Belle Isle, so we took them down to take a look. As we drove from Gross Point Park into the City of Detroit, uh, we were immediately confronted by vacant and abandoned retail, uh, burned-out homes, uh, torn-down buildings, and, uh, I think all of you who have driven Jefferson Avenue know what I'm talking about. My daughter's reaction was, how did this happen? Who is responsible for letting this happen? Obviously, those that were in charge of the city were not sensitive to the problems that were coming and allowed it to get out of control. We can't afford to let that happen here. There are those in our community who support a property rights approach to development whereby the market drives decisions, and everybody is allowed to do whatever they want to do to make a living. They say let the market control who does what and where, we'd all be better off with no additional governmental controls. I would submit to you that that's exactly what we've been doing in this community for thirty years, and we've seen a once vibrant community become riddled with development that has destroyed the quality of life in many of our neighborhoods. A city with over fifty percent of its housing stock in rentals, and this is certainly not a major urban city like Los Angeles or Seattle, it's not a place where most of us want to live. Last Friday afternoon, a meth lab exploded in a home in one of our most beautiful and historic neighborhoods on Cork Street. The subject was severely injured, and the neighborhood was needlessly subjected to significant danger. Interestingly enough, the owner does not live in that home, and the water and gas had been discontinued. The good news is that drugs that were being produced in that home will never reach the streets of Port Huron. The bad news is that it happened in the first place. We can do better than that. That concludes my report.
Thank you. And obviously, presentation number three was done as part of your report, so we'll move on to the regular agenda, to public hearings number one.
Is to hear comments on the proposed use of point seven-two acres of city-owned walkway property in front of the Maritime Center as mitigation property for a previous grant agreement. Following the hearing, council will consider approving this proposal.
Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address the city council on this public hearing this evening? Seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed and ask for a motion to approve the proposal.
So moved.
Councilmember Moller, is there a second?
Support.
Councilmember Ashford, is there any discussion? We'll take the vote.
Councilmember Archibald, yes. Councilmember Ashford?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Moller?
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz?
Yes.
Mayor Rep?
Yes. We'll move on to public hearing number two.
Is to hear comments on the establishment of an obsolete property rehabilitation district for nine-eleven Military Street. Following the hearing, council will consider establishing the district.
Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address the council on this public hearing this evening?
Thank you, Mayor Rep and council. My name is Mark Walker. I live at forty-seven twenty-one Desmond Beach in Fort Rashit, and I'm one of the owners of Michigan Mutual, formerly First Preferred Mortgage, who is housed at eight-hundred Michigan Street in Port Huron. My brother and I started the company, um, in nineteen ninety-two in Port Huron. We love the city of Port Huron, and we are willing to invest in downtown Port Huron and excited about it, so, uh, we thank the city for the opportunity in helping us through this. I'd like to personally thank, uh, Kim Harmon and her staff. They have been absolutely fantastic in helping us. This deal has been on and off for a long time, and she and her staff really helped us to, to bridge some gaps and taught us, uh, some of the things that we should be looking for and doing. So they, I really appreciate, uh, the, the knowledge that they have and what they've done. So that's it, I just really appreciate it. We're looking forward to it. We love, uh, the City of Port Huron, and we're looking to grow our business in downtown Port Huron. And if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Walker?
Just thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, yes, Councilmember Lewandowski.
When, uh, are you expecting to have the building open and running with your employees?
Well, let me be clear, we haven't bought the building yet. So, so this is part of that process, so we have some contingencies. One is the lease and a couple other things, but this is one of the, of the big ones. So, um, it, it, you know, when that happens, we're hoping it happens in the next sixty to ninety days. If that does happen, then we've got some rehabilitation to do, and then, uh, and then we'll go from there. And the time cierro is staying there, they're going to be on the upstairs. So, um, you know, we're looking forward to it. Gives us an opportunity to, to grow our business, and, and, you know, we have over three hundred employees, and most of them are in Southfield, and this gives us an opportunity to, to bring a lot of those jobs here, so.
Uh, we appreciate it, and I thank you for investing in downtown.
Yeah, thank you.
Yes, very, thank you very much. Yes, Councilmember Moller.
Mark, I think this will be a success, not because of you, but because of your brother.
There you go, thanks.
Thanks.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to address the council on this public hearing? Declare the public hearing closed and ask for a motion to establish...
So moved.
Thank you, Councilmember Moller, is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Harris. Is there any discussion? We'll take the vote.
Councilmember Ashford?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Moller?
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz?
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald?
Yes.
Mayor Rep?
Yes. Public hearing number three.
Is to hear comments on the application for an obsolete property rehabilitation exemption certificate for nine-eleven Military Street. Following the hearing, council will consider approving the exemption application.
Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address the council on public hearing number three? Seeing no one, I'll declare public hearing number three closed and ask for a motion to approve the application.
So moved. Second.
Okay, I think Councilmember Lewandowski, seconded by Councilmember Moller. Any discussion? We'll take the vote.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Moller?
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz?
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald?
Yes.
Councilmember Har, um, Ashford?
Sure. Okay. You just do it again so I can hear my name.
Councilmember Ashford?
Yes.
Mayor Rep?
Yes. That concludes the public hearings. We'll move on to public comment. If there's anyone in the audience who wishes to address the council, please come forward and give us your name, and you have four minutes.
Hi, my name is Jim Soto, two-seven-one-six Maple Street. The Port Huron, excuse me, the Port Huron Housing Summit Report, published by City Manager Bruce Brown, is a farce. The city manager's plan to create administrative hearings to tackle blight should be a non-starter because the report lacks vital information that city council needs in order to make an informed decision. First, administrative hearings have been held in Chicago, Philadelphia, and cities in Michigan. There is no discussion in this report about the problems, the pitfalls, and the other challenges that these administrative hearings have had. You don't know that because it's not in the report. Second, the report and suggested legislation that you've looked at have insufficient oversight mechanisms. Legislation of this scope requires democratic oversight beyond the city manager's office to ensure the protection of citizens. Third, recommended rezoning, uh, wide swaths of the city, um, sorry, so that no new rental properties can be registered, unduly infringes upon the rights of property owners, will lead to lawsuits, and importantly, will drive up rental prices. If you decrease the number of rentals, you increase the number of, uh, the rental price, which is going to hurt our most vulnerable citizens. The city manager should address these concerns before the council moves forward with this legislation. Further about the report, I want to draw some attention to it. The supporting information in the housing report raises serious questions as to the fitness of the city manager to lead this city for the city council to accept any further testimony from the city manager regarding blight. First, the city manager demonstrates an inability to provide evidence to the city council. Quote, "We have not in every instance verified every piece of information and must in some situations rely on the integrity of those who have provided it." Who provided it? Perhaps the most important point I want to bring out is if city council accepts this housing report from the summit, the city council will be affirming homophobia, intolerance, and bigotry. Further, the report raises the question if, if the police policy is to criminalize homosexuality. Quote, from the report, "A homosexual website cites Pine Grove Park as an excellent place to, quote, 'hook up.' Police are aware of the situation and routinely sweep the property. I fail to see how homosexual sex is in any way relevant to tackling blight in our city. City council must stand up to this bigotry." It is curious that when discussing blight, the marital status of women is brought up in the report. Quote, "The City of Port Huron has approximately thirteen thousand homes, of which forty-five percent are registered rentals, and an estimated ten percent are rented but not registered. It is estimated a significant number of these renters are single mothers, many with drug habits." What is the evidence for that, Mr. Brown? What is your evidence? Further, what is the city doing to improve the lives of women in general and single mothers in, in specific? Supposedly, we are to accept the city manager's verified the following information. Reports have been received and verified that Detroit DHS caseworkers are giving clients a free one-way bus ticket to Port Huron for many of their clients, from the report. What is the evidence? How many times has this happened? The report is silent on this point. The city manager repeatedly, uh, trots out...
Mr. Soto, your four minutes is up. Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to address the city council under public comment?
Hi, my name's Gabby Solomon. Some of you know who I am, some of you don't. Um, I think it was about eleven months ago that I sat down with Mr. Brown and Chief Reeves and expressed my very deep concerns as a homeowner. And no, I don't have a problem with the renters, except those people that are not just renters, but people that don't care about what they live in and I have to live next to it, then I do have a problem. But that's just people, so I'm not after the landlords. But I expressed my concerns to them, they gave me their word, and they've been men of their word, that they were going to look into this and they were going to work hard on it. What it looked to me like, and I still believe tonight, is they brought the best and the brightest minds to the table, and they've come up with some incredible, shall we say, working points that I really hope that this council views with an open mind. Because as someone who's lived in this city for over forty years, it's the best thing I've seen come out of this in a long time to address a lot of the issues. And I know the millage is, um, a rather repulsive word to a number of different people here and those on the council, but I gotta tell ya, for a homeowner, myself and those around me, you might be surprised, to us, it's money in the bank, if we feel that for a change, instead of seeing our assessments go down, they're going to come up. And that's going to be a win-win, not just for the homeowners, but for the landlords. Yes, they would be able to charge more money if the neighborhoods were stable and the quality of life in our city were a good thing and something you wanted to live in. So I think that this is, you guys, the season of miracles and hope, and no one expects you to perform miracles with passing these proposals, but we sure expect us to have some hope, and we want you to give us some hope. And that would be to work with this, pass these proposals, we need them. You guys have a good Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to address the city council?
Mayor and council, uh, my name is Jim Fisher. I live at eight-sixteen Court Street in Port Huron, actually next door to the house that city manager... Port Huron, actually next door to the house that city manager Brown mentioned that we seem to have lost the other night. The house was purchased about a year ago by a young couple who were living there with their four children. And while it is true that the property owner of record was not there, his intended other, fiancee, many would call, was still occupying the property. I just want it clear that that was an owner-occupied property. The other thing about the home is that, living next door, the children in the house have been over to our home numerous times for dinner. We've been involved in these people's lives. We're aware of things going on. For about six months, we've been communicating with the police about different things and suspicious activity. It's disappointing that it reached this level before any action was taken. But that is actually not the reason that I'm here for you tonight. I just wanted some clarification. For the last ten years, it's been my pleasure to serve as a city's representative on the Blue Water Area Transit Board. I have served, I'm actually the third person from the City of Port Huron to serve on that board, and it has truly been an honor and a pleasure to serve on that board. We've seen a number of things happen. We've seen tremendous growth in that ten years over the Blue Water Area Transit Service, nearly doubling in size. We have, in that time, built our new facility on Lapeer Avenue, and we're in the process, hopefully, of constructing a major transit hub in downtown Port Huron. And it's been great to see this right on the edge of fruition. We do have a couple of the projects in the hopper, one of which is the Harson's Island Ferry, and the other, we were just approached on recently, is the possibility of a new Amtrak station. So we're doing a lot of stuff in the community and the surrounding area. With the amount of experience that I have, it would be, I'd be more than willing, in fact, it would be my pleasure, to continue to serve on the Transit Board. I have truly enjoyed working on there. I understand it is for a vote for the council, and that is up tonight for a vote. I am also fine if the council wishes to hand over the reins of this to someone else, and I understand that desire. What is disappointing to me, however, is the lack of interest by the city council in this board. In the ten years that I have served on the Blue Water Area Transit Board, one time, one meeting, someone from this board came to witness one of our meetings, once. And to me, that is truly disappointing and shows a lack of interest. Again, we do have a number of major projects in the works and in the hopper, and I am willing to continue to serve as this function. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to address the council?
Hey, folks. Mike Bodeis for Grashit. I'm going to seem pretty calm compared to Brian and the other gentleman on the street, Bruce, so you can't chew me out at all, okay? I just have a couple of comments I'd like to make on the proposed new ordinances that the city council have asked the city manager internally to put together. I don't have any issues with the blight ordinances, as long as they're enforced across the board for rentals, homeowners, businesses, et cetera. A city without blight is obviously good for everybody, and expectors that they won't have any major issues dealing with the Port Huron Landlord Association. I think Chief Ruiz knows that, okay? We're fully behind it. But I do find it hard to believe that you folks up here, and I've talked about the city council and Bruce, that you feel that the government should be able to tell a person where they can invest their money and who an owner of a house can sell their house to. I've been in this business for forty years. I started when I was eighteen. Thank God, somebody in the city council didn't tell me, since I don't have a high school education. Went to a good high school, Port Huron Central, okay? But thank God, the city didn't tell me, and I couldn't put, I couldn't, they didn't tell me where I could invest my money at, okay? When and if the economy comes around, when jobs are created, when the city makes it more affordable for an individual to become a homeowner, then there would be more homeowners, homeowner-occupied houses. A city ordinance is not going to bring homeowners to Port Huron. This situation didn't happen overnight. We all know that, and it won't get solved overnight. But if you ask the experts in this business, the realtors, the majority of them would tell you that the market takes care of itself. It's called capitalism. What would the status of the ninety-eight houses that were bought by investors so far this year, they are now paying property taxes, water bills, they've created jobs, they've bought material from local businesses, commissions have been paid to local real estate agents? What would they be if the proposed rental ordinance wasn't effective a year ago? Nobody wants this city to prostrate more than many investors who have invented, like my, who have invested, like myself, their whole life in the City of Port Huron. But stopping new investors is not the way to do it. So go ahead, pass your ordinances, make yourselves look good. But remember, they are not going to bring jobs here, they are not going to improve the economy, they are not going to make homeowners buy a home in Port Huron. But they will create less of a tax base, less income from water bills, which the citizens of Port Huron, in some form, will eventually pay, whether it's in services to be cut or an increase in the kind of millage. Finally, be careful what you wish for as far as investors. From what I am learning, we are getting close to another rush of foreclosures. This time, it will be rental properties. And I'm sure a lot of folks out here would be applauding, and they're going to be excited, okay? But don't get too excited, because if it does happen, somebody's going to have to pay for the huge tax base. The city will lose. So if you don't want Port Huron looking like Detroit or Flint, when not even one investor are interested in buying properties, think over these new under proposals. At least there are investors that want to invest in Port Huron, okay? Thank you for listening. I don't know if it means anything to you. I really wish you'd think twice about it. And I have Miss Bill O'Reilly, so I'm going to have to watch my eleven o'clock, okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mike. Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to address the city council?
Kathleen McCready, four one four Fourteenth Street. I would like to thank the city staff and for all the work that went into the revised ordinances. With the addition of the blight enforcement, it leaves me hopeful. My issue is with ordinance thirteen dash oh one four and thirteen dash oh one five. Those are the zoning ordinances. As it says... The thirteen dash oh one four, this ordinance prohibits new rentals in our residential district. We believe that there should be at least one zoning district whereby homeowners can be assured that no new rentals potentially will impact the value. That's for our districts, mostly north of the Black River, some of the area around Krogers. Most of the area south of the Black River is R1, and that is ordinance thirteen dash oh one five, creating the overlay process, which to me is thinking outside the box, and that's great. But in my neighborhood, commonly known as Harrison Point, from Lapeer to Water, Tenth to Mueller's, there's approximately seven hundred and sixty-five lots. That's not all occupied lots. I went by your map this morning, three hundred of which are rentals, approximately. In the overlay district, you are asking that residents of the neighborhood would be the ones filling out the petitions and going door-to-door to ask for the overlay district of a minimum of fifty houses. I looked at East Lansing. That's how it works. I looked at their neighborhoods. That's how it works. To be asking that of residents of our neighborhood is really a stretch. If three hundred of our houses are rentals and those three hundred landlords live out of the city, they would have the legal right, according to the Sioux, that took the time Friday to explain everything to me, which is, I appreciate that. But if I'm on a block with fifteen houses, and eight of them are rentals, and eight of them are owned by Mike, not that I don't get along with him, I do, what guarantees do I have that he would sign the petition eight times to help affect this one layer of change in my neighborhood? I would have to go out to the landlords first, in my opinion, before I could go address my neighbors and ask them and explain the whole process, that we're in an R1 rather than an R, because I don't think most people understand that. I'm saying it's thinking outside of the box. I'm asking that it be removed from the Housing Summit Report so it can be tabled for a later date after there's more exploration into it. Because frankly, it's a good idea, but it doesn't have a plan in there to rework my neighborhood. It doesn't have a plan in there to improve my neighborhood. It doesn't have a plan in there to work with the residents, to improve the neighborhood. All it does is restrict and interfere with the marketplace. And to me, if you set a high standard and have a clean neighborhood, the public marketplace will take care of itself, and because I shouldn't have to know who owns the house next to me. It shouldn't make a difference whether it's a homeowner or a rental. And I have said that all along. Thank you.
Your four minutes are up. Thank you.
Good evening. Rachel Cole, eight fifteen Union Street. I'll keep it short and sweet. I'm just here to voice my support for the Housing Summit recommendations. I'd like to thank Bruce Brown and all the people that he mentioned for their hard work and efforts. As you know, this is an issue that hits close to home for me and my neighborhood, and is something I'm very passionate about. And I see these proposals as a good start for initiating some potential change in our neighborhoods. I see them as fair and balanced and working towards compliance, which I'm excited is the goal. I'm not looking to, you know, collect fines from everybody. I want to see the neighborhoods clean and bright and inviting places where people want to live. So I think these changes are on the right track, and they have the potential to make a difference, particularly the Administrative Hearings Bureau and the just adjusting the blight code violation so that they can quickly issue a fix-it ticket and do what needs to be done to address those issues. So I'd just like to ask for council support on those ordinances tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, hello, I'm Bruce Francic. I live at thirteen oh three Eighth Street. I'd like to voice my support for the things that Mr. Shawdy talked about tonight regarding blight. I think it's a little bit unfortunate that, I understand the necessity and the utility of it, but that the blight issues are being presented at the same time as the rental issues. I view them as two separate issues, and I'd like you guys to, when you're thinking about this, realize that blight affects homeowners' properties just as much as it does rental properties. It's not an attempt to villainize landlords. This is an attempt to make peoples, you know, people cooperate and, you know, make their homes look like places I'd like to live next door to. I'd also think that the administrative hearings has a level of oversight, and I have confidence in the Central County Circuit Court, which would be the next step. So I don't think there's this, you know, feels like maybe a perception that the administrative hearings just will be able to run roughshod over, you know, act within impunity. But there is another step, and it's elected officials. I'd also like to caution everyone, when we're thinking about these issues, I don't know that we can actually apply statistics, no matter how interesting, that are gathered from national studies, for smaller issues in Port Huron. That's all I have to say. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the council?
Hi, my name is Sherri Smith. I live at eight thirty-five Court Street. I have lived in Port Huron for just over a year. When I came here, I drove, actually, up Court Street. I really enjoy historical architecture, and I was drawn there. And I also have purchased a home on land contract. I'm also a realtor in town. I have not one single time sold a home to a family in South Port Huron, not once. I would love to be able to do that. We have a beautiful new river walk. We have the Maritime Center. We have downtown that is improving. We have so many positive, wonderful things to offer people here, and nobody wants to live in South Port Huron if they have a family. We're getting more young people there. We are having people that are buying, much like myself, that see the potential in its future. But this proposal is also for the future of this city. Don't want to keep it this way anymore. I don't want to look out my window and watch drug exchanges right on the corner of where I live, and I've seen it at least three times. Not the many times that I have not been home, but I've actually been near my window and actually watched it happen. I heard a gentleman who walked by after ten o'clock last night ranting and raving in front of my home. I couldn't, don't know what he said the first time. Probably an hour later, he walked by again, and I caught the end of a sentence, and it was, "Little kid..." Oh, gosh, what'd he say? "Find a little kid..." Something in the, he was talking about sex with a little kid. Out loud, very loud, very, it woke me up, ranting and raving. Down the street, this house blew up, drugs. It's got to stop. This is a beautiful town. It needs to be able to grow with healthy people. We have a new Michigan Mutual, essentially, wanting to bring three hundred, possibly three hundred people from Southfield here. Now, wouldn't it be nice if they could bicycle to work, walk to work, buy a home nearby? But do you think they're going to be looking in that area? Probably not. These homes are amazing. The history of these homes are amazing. I live in a historical home, which I know the history of, and I'm very proud to live there. But I think that there are a lot of other people to be proud to live there, too, if they could only feel safe and feel like their children would be safe. So I truly, the whole entire proposal, I agree with. The blight is not just about renters, that is true. But this is about a housing summit and about all the input from people for the whole summit, so that had to include blight. So I just wanted to say, I support this.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else?
Mayor and council, Mr. Brown, my name's Dan Casey. I'm with the Economic Development Alliance. I've been asked to come here this evening to express our support for the objectives of this plan. The Economic Development Alliance and its Board of Directors support policies and ordinances that maintain or grow the value of real estate in the local community. There are numerous reasons why this is an important policy and public issue for the City of Port Huron. One of the indicators of local economic prosperity is the percentage of home ownership within the community. Unfortunately, during the recent downturn, we saw an erosion of home ownership all across the country. The recommendations that have been introduced by city administration will ultimately result in higher levels of home ownership. The EDA Board feels that this is ultimately a goal that the city should be striving to achieve. I think another thing that's important is that, on occasion, I take business executives on tours of residential areas. It's important to them because they want to invest their money in the local economy. They want to make sure that the economy is strong and that the residential neighborhoods are strong, because ultimately, it impacts their value. A strong code enforcement effort that combines trained inspectors with the police officers is a proactive approach to maintaining the value of the city's housing stock. Enforcement must be consistent, backed by legally binding ordinances, and supported by the elected officials and its administration. This is the only way this program can succeed. About fifty minutes south of here, you'll find evidence of what can become of a neighborhood when the community does not have a clear and supported standard for its neighborhoods. Therefore, the EDA Board of Directors and its membership are supportive of the city's efforts to stabilize its neighborhoods, eliminate blight, ensure that its housing stock is well-maintained, and, above all else, assure the safety of its residents and businesses. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to address city council?
Good evening. David Haynes, eight thirteen Lakeview, Port Huron. Just want to come up in support of the initiative, and have a very strong belief that we need to have tools in place to help improve and create the quality of life in our neighborhoods. Being thirty years in real estate, both as a real estate appraiser and also as a commercial broker, I've witnessed the transition in the neighborhoods firsthand. I've worked both with homeowners and landlords, good landlords and good homeowners, bad homeowners, bad landlords. The impact, though, that has happened to Port Huron has to change. We've seen the decline in the neighborhoods... It was even back in the 19, around 2000, when we had unemployment at 6%. We had rental rates that were between 45 and 50. We had blight. We had issues. These are things that need to be addressed. As was mentioned earlier, the stat of around having 35% homeownership, that is a key factor. When I look at, when businesses are looking to invest, they're looking for a stable community. On one of their sheets, on the very front page, those are the demographics they provide, is population, incomes, ownership, and the rental. Not that rental is bad. It's needed and there is a certain population that absolutely, that's a great fit and we have to provide that. But there is a tipping point. And as many of you probably believe, we've gone past that tipping point. So I support the initiative and I encourage all of you to support it as well.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to address the City Council this evening? You have to come forward to the podium, please.
My name's Kimmy and I lived at 815 Lincoln Avenue. I grew up there. My mother was a single mother on our end that raised five children on her own without a dad. From the time I was 10 years old till my senior year in high school, when she met my oppa, a Port Huron police officer, who protected me and this community from people. Dad can't help the views that they have. I'd like to present the City Council with my offering, since I am a lost legend. And it's our story to tell. My uput was the storm of 2000.
Watch the step. Watch the step coming up.
Thank you, Chief.
He's survived this. We're living this. It's our story. My pappy hid me, had to hide me from people that have nothing good to say about other I was institutionalized for months. I don't know how long. I thought it was because he wasn't proud of me, but he is proud of me. And I'm my upper daughter, Kim Kovach. And I'd like to present you with this, please. That's from Italy, ice skater. Me.
Okay. We don't have too many more minutes here. Okay. All right.
Thank you.
You want me to shake all this for her?
Yes, please.
Okay. Here, give me a hug. You're okay. You'll be all right. Yeah. Let me help you to your seat.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Ashford, for helping her.
No, no, that's fine. Just put it on there. Thank you for helping her.
Okay.
She might want those back at some point.
What was her name?
Eva.
Eva. Eva, thank you so much, okay? For the gifts.
Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to address the City Council this evening? Seeing no one else, I'll declare a comment session closed. I'll get that off. And we will move on to the consent agenda. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Mayor Protem Archibald, is there a second?
Support.
Councilmember Lewandowski will take the vote.
Councilmember Lewandowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Moller.
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz.
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald.
Yes.
Councilmember Ashford.
Yes.
Councilmember Harris.
Yes.
Mayor Rep.
Yes. Some of the items that were on the consent agenda was to approve changing next month's second meeting to December 16th instead of the 23rd, and it will start at 6:30 PM. Confirm and approve single lot special assessments for the cost of removing noxious weeds, unlawful growths, and/or blighting factors. Making permanent temporary traffic control orders number 1267 and 1268. Designating Harker Street as a through street between St. Clair and Stone Streets and between Stone Street and 10th Avenue. Received and filed the resolution acknowledging the mayor's Traffic Study Committee reappointments of Robert Beeden and Walter Crosby Jr. for terms to expire November 28, 2015. And approve the payment of $9,952.58 to the Michigan Department of Environmental Quality for the annual water supply permit fee. Which takes us back to, from the city manager, number one.
Is accepting the bid of L3 Communications Mobile Vision Incorporated in the amount of $38,250 for the replacement of nine in-car video camera systems in accordance with the state of Michigan MyDeal purchasing program and with funding being used from UASI Law Enforcement Equipment Grant Funds.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Councilmember Moller, seconded by Councilmember Ashford. Is there any discussion? I assume this is totally funded with the grant funds, is that correct? Thank you. If there's no other discussion, we will take the vote.
Councilmember Moller.
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz.
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald.
Yes.
Councilmember Ashford.
Yes.
Councilmember Harris.
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski.
Yes.
Mayor Rep.
Yes. Move on to number two.
Is accepting the bid from Detroit Pump and Manufacturing Company in the amount of $16,850 for the purchase of a low lift sand pump for use at the water filtration plant.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Councilmember Ashford, is there a second?
Second.
Mayor Protem Archibald, is there discussion? We'll take the vote.
Councilmember Ruiz.
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald.
Yes.
Councilmember Ashford.
Yes.
Councilmember Harris.
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Moller.
Yes.
Mayor Rep.
Yes. We'll move on to number three.
Is accepting the bid from PBS No Wood Chemicals Incorporated in the amount of $15,930 for an estimated 27,000 pounds of sodium silico fluoride for use at the wastewater treatment plant and water filtration plant.
Is there a motion? Councilmember Lewandowski, is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Ruiz, is there discussion? We will take the vote.
Councilmember Archibald.
Yes.
Councilmember Ashford.
Yes.
Councilmember Harris.
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Moller.
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz.
Yes.
Mayor Rep.
Yes. Number four.
Is accepting the quote from BSB Communications Incorporated in the amount of $8,701.10 for the replacement of the telephone system at the Department of Public Works Bancroft site.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Councilmember Ashford.
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Harris. Is there discussion?
Just one question. Mr. Clay, what does single source refer to?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'll handle this one. The purchasing ordinance allows designating certain vendors to be single sourced when, and there's certain criteria in it. One of them is compatibility with existing systems. Our centralized phone system here in City Hall is of one brand and we've standardized on a specific vendor to provide phone services in our, in outlined buildings. And we were in the process, we have a plan to replace those. One of the ones you did earlier this year was at Palmer Park. This one was planned to be replaced in the 2016 budget year. Unfortunately, it failed. So it needs to be replaced now. But we've already bid this item out and designated them as a single source supplier.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Brennan? No further discussion and we'll take the vote.
Councilmember Ashford.
Yes.
Councilmember Harris.
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Moller.
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz.
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald.
Yes.
Mayor Rep.
Yes. We'll move on to resolutions, number one.
Is to receive and file the McMORRAN Civic Center Authority's strategic plan for the facility and encourage exploration of funding options by the authority for their plan.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I think I have four people who all said. Okay, so we'll start over again. Is there a motion? I have no answer. So moved. Mayor Protem Archibald, is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Moller, is that you I heard?
Second, yes.
Okay. So I heard everybody and then I didn't hear anybody. Okay, is there discussion? No discussion, so you must have done everything right. We will take the vote.
Councilmember Harris.
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Moller.
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz.
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald.
Yes.
Councilmember Ashford.
Yes.
Mayor Rep.
Yes. We will move on to number two.
Is approving the grant agreement with the Michigan Department of Transportation to fund the comprehensive master plan review and update.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Councilmember Ashford, is there a second?
Support.
Councilmember Lewandowski, is there discussion?
Mayor Rep.
Yes, Councilmember Moller.
Is this part of the million dollars that we receive or received from MDOT? For the property up there?
This is a separate part of the mitigation that MDOT entered into. They agreed to fund a planning grant for land use in and around the bridge area.
This is above, beyond a million dollars.
Thank you.
Is there any other discussion? We'll take the vote.
Councilmember Lewandowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Moller.
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz.
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald.
Yes.
Councilmember Ashford.
Yes.
Councilmember Harris.
Yes.
Mayor Rep.
Yes. Before we move on to resolution three, first, I'd like to thank Jim Fisher for his service over the past 10 years. You've done a remarkable job and thank you. And we had a couple of council members who were interested in filling this position. And as you know, I'm the alternate right now, but in discussions prior, we had two council members, Councilmember Ashford and Councilmember Ruiz, who would like to serve on the Transportation Commission. So I would propose, and I believe they would like it this way too, that Councilmember Ashford is the representative and Councilmember Ruiz is the alternate, and I will step back from that. So if that's not any objections from anybody, we'll just insert that into the paragraph where it's blank and then ask for a motion for adoption.
So moved.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Archibald. Is there a second?
Support.
Councilmember Lewandowski, is there any discussion?
Mayor Rep.
Yes, Councilmember Moller.
I guess I'm confused. Last time we voted on this, about two years ago, I was the only no vote, six to one, I believe, because I didn't think Jim Fisher should serve on there. But we came up with this excuse to put him on there because this transit center was going to be built downtown and it was too important not to let Jim be on it. Now, all of a sudden, we're almost at the closure of it and we're going to dump Jim off of it. And I guess my question to Councilmember Ashford and to Councilmember Ruiz is, have they ever rode on the bus? I mean, I know Jim rides on the bus all the time. I'm going to nominate Jim Fisher, so.
My response to Councilmember Moller is yes. I actually cut the ribbon when the buses were first put on the streets of Port Huron. And furthermore, I actually served as SimCOG's transportation chairperson that brought in a grant, the largest grant in the state of Michigan. And then also, I have testified in various cities regarding transportation throughout the state of Michigan and also locally, Port Huron. So I feel that I'm well qualified to assume this position.
And I'm not saying you're not, Anita. I think you are too. I'm just, I'm confused of what the rationale of the council is. Two years ago, it was too important not to have somebody on the council do it. And now, all of a sudden, when we're almost done, Jim's almost done with his work and I was the only no vote, all of a sudden, we're going to kick him off. So he doesn't get to cut the ribbon, I guess, is what I'm saying. But whatever.
Well, if I'm voted on there, I make sure he gets the invitation to do whatever it is. So I share the love. Okay, I'm not hating. We share the love. But to me, I mean, that was yesterday. Today is today. This is current state, so.
My question isn't with you, Anita. It's with the rest of the council members. They're the ones that said it was too important last time not to put him on there. And now, all of a sudden, it's not important. So my question is.
I don't think anybody's.
Nothing against you, Anita.
Oh.
I don't think anybody's kicking Jim off. I think Jim's done a great job at his, it has, we made an exception. It's not normally been just, not just a resident, but it's not normally been a resident that served on that. It's been someone connected to the city. At that time, Jim was going around doing presentations. He was very pivotal in pitching the Transit Center. And that is why, myself, I thought that it was important that he continue because he was behind the presentations and behind presenting it to the community, of which he did a very good job. And he has worked through there and obviously, we all expected it to be done at this point. And hopefully, it is. And I'm quite sure Jim will be included in any celebration that comes to it because he does need to take credit for what he has done. So with that being said, we do have a motion in front of us at this time unless somebody has any further conversation about the motion in front of us. We'll take the vote.
Call for the question.
Councilmember Moller.
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz.
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald.
Yes.
Councilmember Ashford.
Yes.
Councilmember Harris.
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski.
Yes.
Mayor Rep.
Yes. We will move on to resolution number nine.
Is adopting the Housing Summit Report and directing implementation of the recommendations.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Mayor Protem Archibald, seconded by Councilmember Lewandowski. Do we have discussion?
Mayor Rep.
Councilmember Moller.
Just one quick question. Are we going to be equally enforcing this among commercial businesses, seeing how in the past we haven't? And instead, we've just invested money in Mr. Sperry's building there that should have been condemned years ago? But are we going to actually do some condemnations of commercial property? Thank you. Chief Reeves.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion? Mayor Rep. Mayor Protem Archibald.
He's tried twice, actually.
Okay. Go ahead. Councilmember Harris.
I'd just like to make a comment. You know, there's some really interesting points brought from some people in my neighborhood, from the council members and Mr. Bodice. But you know, I guess my problem is, is even though some of them maybe changed my mind a little bit, we can't keep kicking the can down the road. I think it's just time that we started making a change. And I think some of the change might be happening here tonight. We have a gentleman that wants to purchase a building. He's going to pay people living wages and I couldn't go against this argument. So I just really think that we have to do it. And all due respect to the comments, but we got to do something.
Mayor Protem Archibald.
Thank you.
As well, I think we need to support this. I think it's time that we move forward. I do believe that we have the opportunity, as we have in the past, if something in this particular ordinances that we're setting forth do not work, we have the ability to change them and correct something if we do decide that it's not working or we've made a mistake. I'd also like to correct a couple of things. One, Councilmember Moller referred to public housing and for every private housing we get get rid of, we should get rid of public housing, but we won't, and we won't find ourselves. And I think it's time we stop letting the public continue to discuss, and for even us sitting up here to refer to public housing as being ours, because we don't own the public housing, we don't run the public housing, we don't manage public housing. And if we find them, we are not finding themselves. And I certainly will agree to find them if they are not following all of the same rules and ordinances that everyone else is having to do. As Manager Brown stated, we are not a major city. We're not New York. We don't have high-rise apartments with high-dollar lofts that people want to live in. We're different. We're a very small community. We're unique. And things that are happening throughout the nation are not the same. We don't apply. We have to do what's best for our community and what we feel is best at this point to move us forward. As far as investors and jobs, until we fix our neighborhoods, until we clean up our city, until we make this a stable and a place that everyone wants to live, work, and play, we're not going to have the investors that we want, and we're not going to have the jobs that we need, and we're not going to have the incomes that we all deserve.
Thank you. I concur. Councilmember Lewandowski?
I guess I'll just go with what she said there, but.
Oh, she said it so eloquent, Lena.
No, there's no perfect process in this. Obviously, there's going to be some things that are going to need to be changed, and some things are going to work well. I know I'm going to be one of the first out in my neighborhood trying to create one of the rental overlay districts. I'm a new homeowner in the city. That's my plan this year, when the spring comes around, to go out and start that process. Hopefully, I'll be one of the first ones, if not the first one. So I think we're on the right track here, and as I said, I know some people are going to be upset by what we do, but that, you know, that's just too bad, I guess, at this point. We have to do what we think's best for the health of the city, and I'm willing to move forward with this.
Thank you, Liz.
Mayor Rep?
Councilmember Ashford?
Yeah. I just want to say that this is just the tip of the iceberg. I mean, after, when I got this, I picked this up the other, on last week, and I started reading it, and I actually did read everything, because I was trying to pick out, you know, something, you know, just coming on the council, and actually, pretty much of this got started before I got here. But, you know, it's like, you know, where have we been, kind of thing? You know? If not now, when? When we're going to get started to do something and be responsive to our residents? I mean, this is just like a true fix for the neighborhood strengthening. You know, that's all this is. And when I say tip of the iceberg, we're going to have to go deeper. One of the gentlemen mentioned section three about the supporting information. All those things that they talked about that were happening, I thought I was reading something out of Detroit, or Flint, or Pontiac, and this is Port Huron. The only difference is that we have it at a small scale, and that could grow. If we don't put something in place like what we have, what we're doing right tonight, you know, I'm not going to throw the baby out with the bathwater. You got to do something. You got to start somewhere, you know? So nothing beats a failure but a try. And I think that we are obligated, obligated, to do this. This is our responsibility here as your leaders. So I'm just looking forward to seeing how this, you know, play out. It's just, this is just a playbook. You know, you're talking about blight, you're talking about rentals, you're talking about that. Sure, we may change some stuff down the road, but you got to give it a chance to work, you know, to work for the people. And we can't do it from up here, but you have to do it as residents. You have to meet us halfway with what we've done. And I think Marcy, the code enforcement, you're talking about teeth, I mean, you guys are like pet bulls. You marched up here like an army, you know? So, you know, so I have all the confidence in the world that this can work, and I'd like to thank you, Bruce, for hanging in there and leading that ship, you know? So all we're saying to you tonight, you know, instead of calling in a Port Huron Housing Summit, I mean, we mean business. We should call this the City of Port Huron, call the action agenda. You know, there's a lot of stuff in here that we could get going with, but you have to start somewhere. We allowing people to come in here and tell us what they're going to do? No. Hold up. You know, we're the City of Port Huron. We care about our city. We want to make a difference, and you don't want the right hand to slap down the other hand. We got development, we got all this stuff happening, and the true way to cancel that out is to sit down and lay your head and stick your head between the tail and not do nothing. I don't call that moving forward. I call that just taking and doing anything. So you can come up here, you know, and say anything, and I respect everyone that came up here today and, you know, and voice your concerns, and if there is something that we need to change, you know, and I'm sure my fellow council members, we're into that. But there's no way that we're going to sit here and call ourselves council members and lead the communities, the community and leaders, and not do nothing. You know, it's a new day in Port Huron. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to make a comment? I'd just like to say I concur with what's been said, and I do thank you, Bruce, and the staff. I know they've worked very hard on this process, and it's true, we need to start someplace, and we need to make an effort, and if it doesn't, you know, if there's things that need to be tweaked, then we'll tweak them. And we're obviously not going to make everybody happy. I mean, that's just human nature. Someone's not going to be happy with what we've done, but we have to do what we consider to be the best that we can do to move Port Huron forward. We will take the vote.
Councilmember Ruiz?
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald?
Yes.
Councilmember Ashford?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Yes.